This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Okay, let's call the meeting to order for the Southampton Select Board for April 26th at 6 o'clock. And could we start by standing and saying the pledge of allegiance, please?
Our allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Great. My runaway chair. Okay. All right. Thank you, thank you. So, before we get started tonight, I just want to say that I think John is coming, but we had a very spirited meeting last week and appreciate the discussion and I think we are still striving to find a happy medium of where we can go with salary adjustments and that will be probably a bigger discussion at our next meeting rather than tonight because tonight is not a joint meeting with FinCom, but we had two approaches in terms of how to look at salary adjustments so that we could try to really put out a better set of wages for people to understand where they might be in another year or two, but especially to try and retain the talent and personnel we have in town as well as attract qualified people. So, we've come at it from kind of both ends and we're trying to figure out how we can get to a medium, middle ground where we might find some consensus. So, we will be picking that up next time, but I appreciate everybody's initiative, passion, devotion to try to do something and we will, we will get there. It may take us a time, but we'll get there. So, other than that, we have, just to note in terms of the public hearing, I guess we had, we had mentioned it a couple of meetings ago that we had to, we had voted to have our town meeting quorum reduced from 50 to 25 voters and that is on our agenda items, so therefore posted on our website as far as I know. And that said, open time for the public before we get started with the presentation tonight. Anything? No? Okay. So, we have just one presentation tonight from East Hampton Media and Jeff Bastriani, if you would like to address the board here and tell us what you have to.
Hello, thank you for having me back this evening.
Yep.
I brought some words and pictures with me tonight.
Great.
I tried to stay away from numbers knowing that you've seen enough of those probably for a while.
If you want to speak up a bit louder, these mics are really, the acoustics in this room, in spite of these new mics, are still a challenge for all of us.
Yes. Very good.
So, whatever that is. Hi, John. You found the secret spot on the floor to do that yet?
We'll have to put an X on that. There it is. Okay.
You have an X marked the spot.
A visible spot.
Incidentally, we will be in to address the things that you've mentioned you wanted additionally for this space, the kill switch for your audio. We're going to tidy up wiring and so forth and also have the single camera recording option for other boards and committees that want to use this space.
I think it's challenging. I think the, it felt like the other mics that we had used to project more in the room itself.
Yeah.
And you sort of don't get it that much unless people are really talking pretty loudly at the mic, so, indirectly at the mic. We may see as we go, I know when we had the FinCom meeting last week, you know, we had to share a mic obviously because we were short one, but we might think of, to the extent that the wiring goes anywhere to make this more of a, not a straight line, but a little bit of a semicircle, not exactly a semicircle, but not quite a straight line either, that might help one ear of anybody to hear the other end. So, try to accommodate what we can.
Yeah, we're looking for some accommodation. I mean, I'll speak for myself in terms of the volume in the room. I, we're hearing aids. I pick up some extraneous noise because I'm not facing people, it's really difficult for me to hear.
Sure.
And understand. And we didn't know if there's any other way but with fixed equipment and these not generating any increased volume, it's trying to find a solution besides.
Yeah. I know one of the issues that we would face is just due to the fact that the speakers are behind the table and having that projecting louder volume into open microphones would create some other issues, so maybe we can look at adding speakers that are actually facing you.
Maybe.
So, let's see, I had no luck getting on.
Maybe just as an announcement while we're waiting, I think, Rainie, you had mentioned it last time, that the, we're having a vaccination clinic up at Nora School tomorrow, the Ward Health is running that, I believe, with the North Hampton Public Health.
Health Department, yeah.
Health Department. And I believe it's from 5, is it 5?
Four to six.
Four to six, okay. From four to six o'clock at Nora School, so for those that are interested in getting a booster or getting whatever shot you need for your COVID, check in on that, okay? I believe they are taking some walk-ins.
Yep, it's walk-in, but you always can register.
Yeah, so you can register online or do a walk-in, so.
And it's, all vaccines are available, Moderna, Pfizer, and J&amp;J, and it's for any age. Right now, the biggest interest is the second booster for anybody over 50, but they will be able to give vaccines to anybody.
Okay, good. So, based on the other clinics they've had, hopefully this will be a success too with a number of people coming out. They did pretty well on the earlier clinics for the different crowd perhaps, but.
Okay. So, my computer security has been not cooperating with this system. Let's see what happens. Yeah, that's going to make me jump. Yeah, I'm on your Wi-Fi, it's just the security is telling me it's not a, that your projector may be impersonating something else. Well, I don't want to keep you, so.
Go back to that screen, the welcome screen.
This one here. So, I just installed the VIA, but it's going to want me to go into all of my settings and individually allow everything to work properly, so.
It'll give you three options and you can go to the window, so.
We could plug into maybe the HDMI, or I could just send you this. I apologize. I thought it would be a little more seamless than this for me here, but. So, I guess just to recap, last time I was here, we discussed the fact that you're at the halfway point in your franchise agreement with Charter Cable and that basically made an additional $50,000 in capital grants available to the town upon request. I know that Ed has sent a letter to Charter, thank you for sending a copy for us.
You're welcome.
And so, basically what I was going to just do is just kind of run down what our contractual obligation, our scope of services with the town is, just so that we're on the same page in terms of what's asked of us. And I can sum that up in that, you know, we are obligated to provide a programming for your local channel, to administer that channel, to up, to program up to 60 hours of programming per week on the channel, to operate a facility and allow access for people in the community to come in, to provide equipment, to provide training, and to also provide them access to airtime on your local channel. So, as you can imagine, that's not cheap and I have a breakdown of our quarterly time allotments that I made a very nice pie chart for you to see, but again, I'll forward that out to you. But essentially, the way it breaks down right now is that, you know, our contractual obligation with the town basically obligated us to really first and foremost broadcast these meetings live to the community and that anything else would be up to some sort of mutual agreement between us and you. And, and I can tell you now, we are actually broadcasting your planning board meetings live, we are processing and posting in the neighborhood of 27 separate board and committee meetings that your town is, is having here in the building. So, we're putting a fair bit of time into programming for your town government. We're hoping with, you know, things started to change in terms of where we are with the pandemic, that we'll get some folks in who will be utilizing our facilities. I can tell you, we have a very popular podcast that's produced by a member of your community that's getting thousands of downloads a month, "Let's Run" it's called, it's a podcast geared towards runners. So, so that's part of the things that, you know, we do for the community. We host things like podcasts, you know, we're sort of changing our scope of services to meet the demands of modern media needs for, for communities and where people want to kind of put their efforts. Modernizing our facilities is a big priority. So, with that said, one of the things I mentioned was the fact that most of our equipment is well past its end of life. I have a rundown of the field production equipment, for instance, we did an inventory just to show you, and this is the equipment that folks in your community would want to come in and take to do whatever they want to do, cameras, microphones, digital recorders, lighting equipment, that sort of thing. Most of that equipment is seven, eight, close to 10 years old. We have one DSLR camera that will be purchased in 2017, we've got a couple of digital recorders that were purchased in 2019 and '21 respectively. Other than that, we're looking at 2013, 2014, so you get my point. The other major issue is our edit suite computers, so those are the computers that folks would need to come in, edit video and edit podcasts and so forth. We've got two iMacs that are 2014 and two Mac Pros, which are from 2013. So, you know, the issues that we run into is as the technology evolves with video recorders, cameras, so forth, you know, as they grow in the, the image quality, 4K, 8K, and so forth, the demands on the computers grow exponentially. So, where these computers were adequate, you know, five or six or seven years ago, they just can't keep up and so it takes nearly twice as long to do things now than that we used to do relatively quickly a while back. The other thing I mentioned last time was our playback server, so we are moving forward with that. I had a breakdown of the quotes that we got for that system. We basically, there are really only a couple of companies that manufacture this equipment and, and so we, we had demos for each of them. And then the respective quotes came in at 88,063 and change and 48,343, which is the same company whose system we're using now. We opted to go with that company, obviously we know their equipment, it's very reliable, they're a great company to work with in terms of their tech support and their service and their training and we're very happy with the product. We feel that this upgrade is going to add a lot of really great features that you will notice at home and that will make our lives a lot easier in terms of programming. Among those are, I had mentioned closed captioning, we will now be able to close caption live meetings here. We will also be able to stream our channels 24/7, which is not something we can do now. In fact, the streams that people are seeing now of your meetings, like right now, is actually a laptop that's pulling down the YouTube feed and sending it through our system for play out. So, not necessarily a modern day workflow for, for streaming. So, this new system will remedy that, a lot of the features are now cloud-based, obviously that's where much of this stuff is moving to anyway. The ability for us to manage content is going to be much easier and just being able to know that this content will last in perpetuity, or at least as long as the cloud is out there. We do have backups now of everything that we produce and that, you know, our community members produce, obviously they're on YouTube, we have an archive.org channel that everything gets sent over to as well. But we feel like this cloud-based system is going to make things very easy for people to find, legacy content, and so it's, it's a good way for us to go. I think it's worth noting also that with these additional features, obviously no one does these things for free and they sound great and I wish they were included with the price of purchase, but unfortunately, things like closed captioning are very expensive. In fact, we've, we've added up the numbers and, you know, we're going to have to purchase blocks of time. Basically, they, they offer 500-hour and 1,000-hour blocks of time and those come at a cost of $3,500 and I think $6,200 respectively. Now, we've added up the time for live broadcasts from last year and we came in just shy of 250 hours. So, that means we can purchase a 500-hour block and hopefully get the better part of two years out of that and also have the option of being able to close caption other live things, obviously your town meetings would be one of those things and, and other things that, you know, we feel would, you know, benefit from having captioning.
Jeff, can I just ask you one quick question?
Certainly.
So, when you mentioned the 500 hours, that's just for Southampton, not East Hampton and Southampton?
No, that's, that's total.
That's total.
That's, that's for the system, yeah. So, the 250 hours was a combined between both towns.
And all the other numbers you were citing were for the use by both towns as well?
So. The, the purchase price for the equipment, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Also, the streaming is, is not super expensive, but that's going to add another approximately $2,200 a year to our bottom line, so we'll have to make up for that. Clearly, we'll have some work to do on the fundraising and finding underwriting and sponsorship fronts, but I think, again, I think the value we'll be adding to our broadcasts and overall look of our channels and again, the ability for people to access content are going to be much improved, so. That, that about sums it up.
And remind us the amount you were looking for from Southampton and how does that compare to the overall total cost of change?
So, well, the, the capital grant is for up to $50,000, I believe Ed did request that full amount. We have capital money currently in our budget, so this would not by any means take up the entire $50,000. I understand you have some needs now, you know, some things that we need to address to make life better for you here and to, you know, I think that there was some talk about possibly adding a camera at the school for school board meetings, I don't know if that's still something we're looking at possibly doing, but point being, you know, obviously we want to, we want to make sure you're taken care of and, and, you know, we've got five years now until your next contract negotiation with Charter, so we're going to have to be quite judicious in how we spend this money. The bottom line, without a playback system, we don't have a channel, you don't have a channel, East Hampton doesn't have a channel, it just doesn't work, so that's our number one priority, so that's happening.
So, have you been able to nail down an actual amount that you would be, is it the entire 50 or not the entire 50 then?
Well, we would request to have the 50,000 if that's what you requested.
I'm just going there because I'm assuming we've got to put this on the town warrant for the town meeting and we need a real figure to do that.
It was for the 50. Now, these are restricted funds, they're not, they can't be added to your general fund, these are specifically for PEG and PEG broadcast uses only. So, again, I, I know there's going to be some negotiation here for future equipment and all that and I want to make sure that we get to that as soon as we can. And then obviously, I, down the road, you know, what are things going to look like five years from now? And I can tell you, I, I started to put together a five-year plan, a capital plan, to show you, but I'm already there. You know, this equipment that I have now is, is, you know, we're knocking wood every day that those cameras come on and do their job, so. But again, you know, this is equipment for everyone, this is not just for East Hampton and it's, you know, our facility is open to everyone. Have any of you actually been to see our studio? Okay. Yeah, I would love to have you visit at some point, our annual meeting is coming up, second week of June, if you're available, we'd love to have you join us for that. I will have our annual report done by the end of this month and sent over to you also. Yeah, that's.
Do you have a sense of, I'm just curious, of how many people in town take advantage of the, sort of the, the other services and, and come in and want to borrow equipment or do recording or do podcasts or whatever? I mean, do you have a sense of that?
Well, you know, I could tell you right now, none, really. I mean, you know, we've got some folks coming in to do shows, I know we have one Southampton resident who does a show and we've got, had a couple of brave souls who've kind of said, you know, "I'm not going to sit home anymore, we're going to go in, we're going to do our thing." I think, again, as, as things start to change, you know, and we get out and are visible in the community again, people see us doing what we do, we're going to make a very strong appeal to try to bring in membership and, you know, just getting people through the door to see our facility. It's a pretty, pretty impressive studio, you know, it's a full-on television studio, we can do a lot of things out of that space and, you know, I, I would really love to see more people take advantage of that and also open it up for events, you know, if we've got special, you know, screenings of, of local films or, you know, things like that, those are things that we're hoping to also do. But again, we're just kind of playing that waiting game like everybody else. Yeah.
Yeah, question?
Could I just ask a couple of questions, Jeff?
Sure.
You mentioned that, I think playback and streaming is really important and you mentioned $88,000. How many subscribers do you have in East Hampton and how many subscribers are there in Southampton?
Cable subscribers?
Yeah.
Let me pull that up. So, the 88,000 was actually a quote for the high-end playback system that we are not purchasing.
Okay, what was the one from the company you were comfortable with?
It's 43, 40, I'm sorry, 48,343.
Okay.
Hopefully, I can. Okay. So. Let's see, Charter subscriber count as of 2021, let me see, East Hampton, let me get to the year here. 2021 subscribers. East Hampton had 3,673.
Sorry, 300, sorry?
3,673.
3,673. And Southampton. Has 1,603.
1,000?
1,603.
1,603. So, the question I had is the $50,000 that's available is because we're halfway through and that is the only PEG money for equipment that's available for the next five years? Is that true?
Through your contract.
Through our contract, so.
And, and East Hampton had a very similar contract in terms of the ways.
Yeah, we actually saw a copy of that, yeah. I, my concern is that five years is.
It's a long time.
I mean, it's a long time and I'm just worried because, you know, we mentioned a few of the things that would be helpful, we were having a meeting yesterday up in the upstairs conference room and there was like 12 members there and there's no easy way to sit around a table up there. So, having the avail, the availability of recording meetings in this room would be really helpful. And I was contacted by a few people, John, I don't know if I mentioned this to you, but when the school committee approved the budget, a few people were asking me why it wasn't broadcast on 191, the school committee meetings.
It was on 191, actually.
Pardon?
It was broadcast on 191.
Oh, it was?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, actually, we got a request, I mean, you know, your contract actually.
They must not have been able to access it for some reason.
Yeah, I'm not sure why, we know it was broadcasting, it wasn't streaming, unfortunately, I had to scramble and get an intern to cover and as I had mentioned, how our, our streaming workflow right now isn't really user-friendly, but at the very least, we made sure it was on the channel.
So, I just want to, $50,000 isn't very much, I'm just worried about five years, you know?
Yeah, I mean, and technology's changing so much too.
Yeah, I would see our utilization going up if we had portable equipment because lots of different activities go on and when you only have one, one place where it can be broadcast or two places where it could be recorded, that limits the, the use by, by others who I think have some good activities would make for good programming.
Well, give me some examples.
So, is there any possibility for portable equipment?
Well, all of our equipment is portable and, and we've got the ability to stream from any location that's got a solid internet connection.
And stream.
Yeah, yeah, we've got that ability now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then we need to understand how to use it better.
Well.
That too.
As I said, you know, I think the, the thing is, is to, we need to do a, a better job, obviously, of kind of stating, you know, this is who we are, this is what we do, this is how we do it, this is what you can do, this is, you know, this is how we train you, this is what's available to you. And I understand that, I know that's part of my, you know, very high on my list of priorities is to, to get the word out into the community so that they understand, you know?
I think, just to add on to that, I think one of the things that I can recall anyway, and I don't, don't remember if it was last year, but it might have been the year before, was Celebrate Southampton. I know East Hampton Media had come to the event and were there to record if people had some, you know, memories of history in town, you know, you all were doing some recording there and were actually making a video for future promotion, I believe, of Celebrate Southampton Day. So, it's those kinds of things that we probably will start to get more and more of maybe over time and it's a matter of, you know, being in good communication and letting you know what's happening and seeing if that can fit into your schedule to send somebody out. I mean, if you don't have the, the text to send, that may be a problem too, but.
I think it's important to understand that the function of community media is not necessarily to have us there as kind of a cut-rate production company. It's really about getting community members involved and volunteers and people who are willing to do this. I say this all the time, we, we've got all kinds of people who are going to these events anyway and I think there are at least a few of them who might be willing to come in and get trained and, and, you know, come and take a camera and, and, you know, we're happy to, to be there if necessary, but the reality is if we show up on site, that's billable time, you know, I've got to pay these guys to be there.
Sure.
Right? So, you know, we do the best we can, we've got a very limited staff and, you know, our budget's not getting any bigger. But again, I, I think the, the bigger part of my job right now is to get out to the communities and to get people, you know, to understand what we have available and the services that we can help.
Yeah. Well, I think too, we need to be maybe a little bit more proactive in terms of our community calendar, I mean, when I've tuned in sometimes, I mean, it's, it's like months ago, on, it, the thing that scrolls on my TV at home is like. On, it, the thing that scrolls on my TV at home is like, "We're, we're farther ahead than that." So, I don't know how we update that, or how we make it easy for you to update us online. I mean, that's what we need to, you know, do better at, I think on both sides, but...
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. So, at this point in time, do we need to...
I just have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
You, you mentioned the lives, the live streaming, and I know we broadcast on one-ninety-one. As someone who doesn't have cable, and probably will never have cable, because I'm a millennial, when will we start to, when will it ever be live streaming from YouTube?
It is streaming right now.
Or it is?
If you went to our YouTube channel right now, you should see a live stream of this. But understand, Joy, what I, what I had said before is that you're seeing a stream being pulled into a laptop, which is being fed into our system.
Fed into the system, which is not, yeah, I understand that, so it's gonna be more...
Be able to streamline that whole process, and, and then the channels will be streamlined, uh, live streaming twenty-four-seven, so...
Okay, so it is live, and all the meetings are livestreamed, or?
Select Board and...
Through the YouTube channel?
Right now, planning, we've been doing planning.
And select.
And select board. And then, again, with reasonable notice, we're happy to accommodate.
Okay.
So, a lot of the other meetings are recorded, people, you know, are...
I've always watched the recordings, I haven't seen the actual stream, so I will find it, I will look for it.
There's a couple of people I know that used to come to our meetings and now choose to stay home because they can, they can get it on YouTube.
Yeah, on YouTube, yeah, that's, that's my television.
I just wanna ask a question, Jeff, and maybe another question that might be more Ed's question. You know, when we have water users, only the people that use the water, although, you know, it's the enterprise fund, and granted, it's voted by the voters, the same thing with the transfer station. I mean, this is, this is a service that's paid for by sixteen hundred people theoretically, but it still requires the entire town meeting to approve it.
Yeah, I don't understand that exactly, why that is.
So, I'm just not sure why that is. And in terms of selling this to voters, other than the street, you know, like, if you were to say, "We're gonna release this money that can only be used for PEG programming, and therefore, we're going to do, you know, what, besides streaming?" Is there anything else that, you know, there should be a message to the voters in terms of what they're gonna get from the service? At least the people that actually have cable?
Well, I mean, again, if you look at the budget breakdown of, you know, what our current operating budget is, and it's right around three hundred thousand dollars. You know, you're getting, and I can't emphasize this enough, you've got a really fantastic access facility to use in town. You've got equipment, you've got experts to train you on how to use the equipment, okay? And on top of that, obviously, are the services that we provide above and beyond our contract. You know, we're there for local nonprofits, if they need help putting together a PSA. I know we've done one for the town recently, for the ARPA funds. I was in the chat, and I believe maybe you were in on the conversation about the police fire facility video, right? So, you know, we're there doing those sorts of things. But, you know, the, the cable subscribers are a shrinking market. And, you know, Joy made a good point that she may never have cable. That's not good for us. In fact, for me to stand here and say, "We're gonna be live streaming our channel so that those people can get it for free while this sixteen hundred and three people are paying," that's really not fair. But, this is the world we're in now, and we have to, we have to match that need. Yeah, that's my best answer.
Okay, thanks.
Anything to add to that in terms of how this happens, that we have to go through town meeting vote and whatever? It's just because it's part of our contract with...
I'll just, it's what the legislature says, and I'll just expand on what Priney said. Not all the townspeople get water from our water system. Yes, it's paid for the fees, but guess what? That enterprise and the transfer station enterprise fund has to be approved by town meeting.
So, it's similar.
Yeah, okay. So, we definitely would need this fairly soon, so we can finalize things for the town meeting warrant. Are we feeling like we've got enough information? Or did we, we missed Jeff's presentation in terms of all the numbers and figures and fancy pie charts?
I'm sorry?
But, assuming you get that sent around to Ed and to us.
Yeah, I'll send that to you.
I would think we would need to have a motion to accept the idea of doing something about this request for our town meeting warrant in terms of allocating the funds from our capital grant, from the Charter Capital Grant Program, is that right? Is that what it's actually called?
Well, you'd at least need a motion to put it on the annual town meeting as a warrant article, because that is under your purview of what those warrant articles are.
Yeah, okay. Whether we have the actual amount or not, or we...
I think we are.
I mean, we're kind of there, aren't we?
Yeah, I think we're there.
We're there.
I'll make a motion for, for the discussion to add a warrant article to allocate fifty thousand dollars from PEG programming from Charter to East Hampton Media.
Did I say that right?
And I'll second that.
That's not all right?
I've, yeah, that's something, it covers it. I've got most of the article from a previous one, so...
Close enough, okay, all right. All right, any discussion about that, any further discussion about that?
I know it's up to the moderator, but if, is there someone from East Hampton Media who might be able to speak to that at town meeting?
I'll be there, yeah, we'll be there, obviously, broadcasting, so I'll step away from a camera.
Okay, all right, any further questions, discussion? If not, could we have a vote? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Oui, 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 all right. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, motion passes. Thanks, Jeff. All right, we don't have any quarterly reports this evening. Jumping on to the town administrator report.
Certainly. Let's see, just to let you know, and I did send down an email. We have received our free cash and retained earnings certification from the close, closeout of the fiscal year 2021 accounts. Free cash has been certified at three-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand, forty-two dollars. Water Enterprise Fund retained earnings are eight-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars, and the Transfer Station Enterprise Fund retained earnings were certified at fifty-four thousand, two-hundred-and-six dollars. Just to let you know that the portions of East Street, which were scheduled to be paved and overlaid, have been completed by the paving contractor. The Board of Health has requested consideration for a warrant article to be added to the annual town meeting in order to borrow two-hundred thousand dollars to rejuvenate the septic betterment program, which they are reporting has run low on its funding, please see the attached. BG Mechanical has removed the Town Hall heating hot water pump, which was leaking fairly heavily. The pump has been taken to their shop, where it will be rebuilt and then returned and put back in place here at Town Hall. I expect that will be, it will be ready for, to be reinstalled either Friday of this week or Monday of next week. They will also be replacing two of the back check valves and one pressure gauge off the water heater as they are starting to fail, and we have been getting warm and hot water into the cold water supply side periodically. I have found that the warrant article for the collector, the treasurer collector to be changed from an elected to appointed position was, wasn't within the timeframe needed between a town meeting vote and an election ballot question. The warrant article should be placed on a future special town meeting, usual January or February timeframe, and then the ballot question approved by the select board and placed on the following annual town election ballot. Jeff Swanson from Anytime Fitness will be having their grand opening ceremony on Tuesday, May twelfth, at three-thirty PM for the ribbon cutting and the grand opening event to follow in the Red Rock Plaza. He would like to invite the members of the select board to attend this event. Please let me know your availability, and I will pass it along to Jeff. Chief Workman has requested that his transfer warrant article for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two expenses from ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation be increased from the original four-thousand-dollar request to ten, to ten-thousand dollars due to some unanticipated expenses. And then, let me see, I thought I had one more, I copied it and uploaded, no. Now, I got, I thought there was one, in fact, I know there was one more on here that didn't get printed. What was it? Maybe not. I think it was the updated, in fact, I know it was the updated schedule for June.
All right, just to clarify, so the, the warrant article for the treasurer collector was not within timeframe?
Correct.
It said was here, it says was here, okay, okay.
It was not.
What, what is the timeframe, just so we know? How long does it have to be?
I'd have to go back and double-check, and I'll let you know.
Okay, all right.
Also, on my calendar, May twelfth is a Thursday, not a Tuesday.
Yeah, it should be May, should be May tenth, not the twelfth.
Is it May, is it on Tuesday or Thursday? Or May tenth, or May twelfth?
For Jeff Swanson, yeah.
Okay, so then, that's a Thursday.
That's a Thursday, yeah, for Jeff Swanson.
I was probably looking at April again, then.
Yeah, okay, so that's Thursday, May twelfth, for the opening of Anytime Fitness, okay? All right, and, okay, at what point do we wanna go through the, this request from the Board of Health that you've attached here, later on when we get to the articles? Or, this is a new, a new request? Did they have a meeting? Did this come out of meeting?
I have no idea, it was handed to me yesterday.
No.
I'm not sure if they... So, this wasn't voted by the Board of Health?
Not at a meeting, not at the last meeting that I attended, unless there was something that occurred in between that I missed.
I mean, my...
I don't know, I'm not aware of any other meeting.
Yeah, I guess my, my first question would be, and we can maybe come back, I'm trying to see where we could, we could put it in under the agenda, under the articles for town meeting when we get to there, but my first reaction, anyway, is why couldn't this be something grant-funded, rather than, I mean, with all the infrastructure money coming out, surely, we could find something that could handle this, rather than put it on a borrowing?
It's a possibility, or, or we may look to join with another community that's doing something like this and look to put in an application for CDBG funds.
Okay, yeah.
I'd love to, I'd help meet and vote on this, and then come and talk to us about it.
Yeah, no, truly, I mean, I don't know enough in terms of...
I would be interested in knowing how many people have used the program, you know, some, some data behind, behind this request. And how long will this two-hundred thousand dollars last? How long did the last allocation last?
Yeah, what was the last allocation? Well, in all fairness, I, they had asked whether we had them on for tonight, and I said that we had actually decided to give everybody a break and didn't have them on, but if they had had this, I, I wasn't aware that they had something to present to us, so perhaps that's my fault for telling them they didn't need to come tonight, but...
I think if they had known about it at that point in time, they would have said something.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I would prefer that it goes to committee first, before it comes to the select board for a vote. And like I said, there's a lot of questions.
Yeah, so maybe we can pick it up on another, another meeting here. But I think we would, most of us aren't that familiar with this whole betterment, septic betterment program. To understand when it was last allocated, how many people take advantage of it, how many more people might take advantage of it? What, you know, what have we been able to spend down, et cetera? And why, why this versus some sort of infrastructure grant possibility? Yes, John?
Isn't this, isn't this the program where a resident can borrow money at the reduced rate to fix up their own system?
Yep, yeah.
Correct, yes.
So, we, do we pay for it even if it's an interest?
It says it shall be raised by borrowing.
That's it.
Do we end up having any, do we put out any money, even interest on the loan?
We must.
The programs I'm familiar with have all been funded through CDBG. The town usually, usually has to put up some type of match, but that match may have come back to the town when people have sold their homes before the loan is up or whatever. So, I was not here whenever this was originally, shall we say, authorized, or how it was authorized, whether it's through town funds, or grant funds, or whatever, so...
CDBG is the Community Development Block Grant.
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
Right, but, but if we had our current debt authorization, there's gotta be an authorization in there if they're asking to reestablish this. So, we would see what our original number is and how much is left in there, which would answer a lot of these questions here.
Right.
To Francine's point, we don't have any of that before us tonight.
Right.
Correct.
So, we've heard the request, but let's have them bring it to us in more detail after they've met.
Let me see, it was presented to me yesterday.
Yeah, okay.
I'm a bit of a pain, as you know, so, I mean, I, I'm one that just says, "Jeez, this is way past the deadline."
True.
But, I thought it was my obligation to let you know about it.
Yeah, well, I mean, if it's gonna help people, you know, with septic, that's great, but I think it's, I mean, I think we should, I think they should have a meeting to discuss it and then bring it to us.
Right.
With details.
All right, sounds good. Okay, any other questions on the town administrator report?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Can we have an explanation for letter G? Because last I knew, I thought we were actually underspent, and we were sending money back.
Yeah.
It looks like we're asking for even more.
A letter G, John is asking about...
Workman? Department head give you an ex, any explanation to justify the difference between four thousand and ten thousand? Letter G.
On fire?
Yes, he texted me at like four-thirty this afternoon. He received two unexpected bills, one for billing software and one for paging services, which the paging services, he said, comes up every five years.
So, he's, he's asking from the transfer to go from four to ten, which I'm guessing the four is already an existing question that I, that I'm just drawing a blank on, four to ten, but last I knew, I thought we were actually sending money back to the reserve fund as being unspent.
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the one comment I said, I told him was, "I don't know how much is in there and if there's enough available to cover that difference." It's something that I will have to discover now that we've closed twenty-one over the next few days, probably towards the beginning of next week.
So, the two charges total six thousand dollars? So, he wants to go...
I actually think they totaled eight thousand.
Okay. Because this was, this was gonna be a warrant article on the operating budget, right? For transferring from ambulance receipts, right?
Yes.
So, did this go to Finance Committee?
No.
No?
First I'm hearing of it.
Well, he just got it today, but it should have them review it as well.
Substantial unplanned EMS bills totaling eight thousand, four-hundred-and-four dollars and sixty-six cents.
Well, we do have an EMS budget line, I don't think it's that high, but doesn't, shouldn't that come out of there?
Well, he was already gonna be overspent, that's why the original warrant article request is there to transfer four thousand dollars from ambulance receipts reserved for negotiation in there.
Just to clarify, the line item is gonna be overspent, or his entire budget is believed to be overspent?
That account is going to be overspent.
The line item?
Yes.
Okay.
May I ask about number D, the BG Mechanical? Is that money already in FY twenty-two budget?
Yes, it is.
All right, thank you.
We had five thousand dollars left, and the quote I got for this is twenty-one hundred.
All right, thanks.
Okay. All right, so, I'm assuming that when we really get back into budget issues, we will pick up G again on our next meeting, okay? All right, all right. How about any other select board reports? Thank you, Ed, for that. Who would like to go first? Joy, do you have any select board reports from your committees?
Concom had a special meeting last Wednesday. They voted to spend up to nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars to hire Jeffrey Collingworth to do engineering work for the new bridge over the Manhan at the Manhan Meadow Sanctuary, and to fill out the Chapter Ninety-One Waterways License Application, and...
Face this way a little bit.
Oh, sorry, sorry, can you hear me now?
Yeah, thank you.
And their next meeting is May second. Open Space is meeting finally this week in person at, I believe it is six PM here at Town Hall. Planning Board did not meet, but their next meeting is May fourth. Housing Authorities Working Group with MHP met to discuss the production of a housing trust. We have a tentative date for June ninth for a public community meeting just to give out information about municipal housing trusts and to inform the public. So, that's a tentative date at this point.
Great, okay.
And that's all.
Good, making progress, okay.
Can I ask a question about the bridge? So, was that grant-funded, the money to repair that bridge?
I believe, yes, yes.
That's wonderful, if that, that trail gets opened up.
Hopefully sooner rather than later.
CPC has not met, there's no meeting planned. Public Safety Building Committee met yesterday, yesterday? Yes, yesterday. Reviewed all town lands for potential sites, continuing to narrow down the list. Also discussed where the official Center of... Also discussed where the official center of town is geographically, which is actually on High Street. For all intents and purposes, we're using the intersection of Center Street and Route 10. The next meeting will be possibly, will review possible privately-owned lands for consideration. We came up with criteria for considerations such as along Route 10, not more than a quarter of a mile from Route 10, not conservation or APR land. So we're, we finished looking at town-owned land, now we're going to be looking at privately-owned lands for consideration. The next meeting is May 9th at 4:30. The Council on Aging has not met. Their next meeting is 5:04 at 4:00 PM, which is the annual meeting when officers will be elected. But the Feasibility Committee has met twice. The final appointment to that committee, there is on the agenda for tonight. We discussed additional clarification of the will, population statistics projecting for the next 10 to 20 years, possible land parcels for the center, what we think should be included in the center, given what we've learned thus far, and next steps for a project outline and timetable. And the next meeting is next Thursday at 12:30. And then the Board of Assessors met yesterday, regular business of the office. Bishops and associates are beginning inspections of at least 400 parcels in town. Thank you, Ed, for sending out the Code Red Alert. They also discussed the budget, and their next meeting is May 9th at 3 o'clock. Okay, very good. Francine?
Okay, the North School Committee met on April 13th, at which time they took a final vote on the fiscal, fiscal year '23 school budget totaling $5,40,541, which is a 3.58% increase over last year. The committee conducted its first reading of several updated school policies that include non-discrimination on the basis of sex, sexual harassment definition and procedures, non-discrimination policy including harassment and retaliation, and a policy for selection of participated in the, of participants in the Integrated Preschool Program. They discussed the three-year school bus transportation bid, but did not make any decision in the absence of the business manager. The committee approved the school choice numbers based on available classroom space for next year. The committee also accepted a donation of 67 used laptops and five used desktop computers from Smith College. This donation was facilitated by the IT Director, Kim Florick. The committee approved the school price lunch at $3.75, which was the price, I believe, during the pandemic, and it was also adjusted, the price was also adjusted for reduced school lunch program. The Bylaw Committee met on April 19th and reviewed the final drafts of the seven bylaws that will appear on the annual town meeting warrant. All drafts have been reviewed by legal counsel, and appropriate revisions were made at our meeting to this, to, according to the recommendations that they made. Those bylaws include fees to the town treasury, general government amendment, numbering buildings, the deletion of two obsolete landfill bylaws, since we no longer have a landfill, naming of public buildings, structures, bridges and land, and numbering buildings. We also met via Zoom with the E360 personnel to have a preliminary view of their first draft, and to learn the process whereby we participate in offline reviews of their work and provide our input into the process. The HR feasibility group, which John and I and Ed participate, has not met for some time, but it is scheduled to meet on May 4th, and I hope that we get the final report from the consultant based on interviews that they've conducted with the five towns in identifying the needs and also developing the plans for how services would be delivered on a per-town basis. So that's it for me, thank you.
Good, thanks. John?
The PBB met last Thursday. The results of that meeting will come up later on tonight. The next meeting of that committee is May 19th. Capital has not met, and the next date is not available at this moment. Finance had a joint session on 4/21 with the Select Board, continued to review the budget. Next meeting at this point in time is not known.
Vicky told me today that they're planning to meet Monday evening.
The next meeting has not yet been posted.
May 3rd, that's good, May 3rd.
We can imagine it, though. All right, sounds good.
2022.
All right.
It must be 5/2?
All right.
May 2nd is Monday.
May 2nd, Monday, yeah, okay. All right, and then just a couple for me. The Grant Committee has not met this last couple weeks, nor has the Cost efficiencies committee. I'll be scheduling meetings soon on those, probably sometime toward the, to have them later in the week. We've got, especially for the Grant Committee, working on two things. Mostly Randall's been dealing with the tie-in-bond folks to help put together the MVP Action Grant application, which is due in, I believe it's May 5th, and the Grant Committee may get involved in looking at the review of any, any narrative that goes with it, but all the technical information will be provided by the consultants. We have been notified by Mass Trails that there is another ground, another spring round of grants opening, and so we had put in a request for $300,000 for the design work on the bike path, which is not anywhere near enough, and there is another round opening, so we are going to be putting in an application for additional funds to see if we can maybe up our, up our ante here a little bit, and that's due in, I believe, May 16th. And we'll probably, I think the maximum that I read was 500,000 to request, and so we've already asked for 300, so I think we would just supplement and ask for an additional 200, to see if we can maybe get that grant. Nothing has been awarded yet. Usually these are not announced until sometime like in June, July. So that would, if we got that, that would really help us along with the design work that will be coming along, hopefully soon, once we get the acquisition part finalized, which is still being worked on by the railroad lawyers. The other thing is the Tech Committee keeps on meeting. We've got, we had a special meeting, or not a special, we had a meeting last night to invite in a spokesperson from Wired West, which is another group that's basically a cooperative that works in conjunction with Whip City Fiber, to talk about how they've been working up in some of the hill towns, including the places like Beckett, Peru, Worthington, a few of the really, really small towns. They started out with many, many more towns, but then they are, right now, I believe, dealing with six towns that they are servicing. And so we heard a little bit of their, their trials and tribulations, in terms of some of the things to watch out for, some of the cost estimates they had, and the biggest recommendation from the guy that spoke to us was that if Southampton is going to consider doing broadband, his recommendation was not necessarily to go with them, but to say, if you're going to do it, do the entire town to once. Don't do it piecemeal, because it's a 15-year slog. To do one section by one section by one section. Just bite the bullet and go for it and find the money to, to make it all happen in, in a shorter timeframe. So it was a very interesting presentation. I think that will feed into the, the final thoughts for the Tech Committee. It adds to two other presentations they've had on the broadband fiber idea, and the idea of having a municipal light plant, which would allow us to manage our own utility for the broadband as a town. And they are also going to be having a second follow-up meeting with a consultant, with a representative from one of the website design firms, so hopefully, after these next couple of meetings, we might have some recommendations to come forward to us in terms of which vendor they think would be the most advantageous for the town to look at, going with both on the website design, first of all, because we wanted that to come out of the ARPA, ARPA money, I believe, and then possibly pursuing the broadband fiber, fiber broadband, whatever, option in town for home to, fiber to home possibilities, okay? So that's what's being worked on. There's a lot of things kind of happening, but nothing yet quite concrete on that, okay?
Can I ask?
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions. So the, we had received originally $100,000 times two for the Greenway, and then you had said that you're still waiting to hear about the 300,000?
Right.
And then you're going to apply for another 200. So can you just tell everybody what, what the 100 and 100 are going to be used for?
Sure. The 100 originally was from the Housing Choice Grant Program, which is going to be used for acquisition of the rail corridor. That was also another 100,000 on top of that, from Mass Trails for the same purpose.
Okay.
So we have 2,000, 200,000 from them as direct response to our grant requests for acquisition of the rail bed itself. That, we had estimated was going to be at about 370,000, I think, total.
Right.
And that's where the money came in through, then, the next request was through CPC.
Right.
Which was, well.
It was switched to CPC.
Yeah, it went to town meeting to get approved at town meeting, and then it, it has been changed to CPC funds because we are now able to use CPC funds to acquire the rail bed, which had not been the case when we were starting this whole process. So basically, there's another 270,000 that has been approved through CPC, so technically, we have all the funds available.
To acquire it.
To acquire. We're waiting on all the pieces to come together on that, and I believe one of the articles on this will be to rescind the original vote that had been taken on that.
It would have been a dead exclusion.
Because it now, it was going to be a dead exclusion, and now it's going to be covered through CPC funds. So that just kind of puts everything in proper order, shall we say. And so then now, so the acquisition, we've kind of set aside. We think we have the funds available per the contract with the, with the MOU with the railroad, and so now we're working toward the, the actual design cost, which has still got to be done before we can even access, obviously, the, the money on the tip fund at State, not DOT. So right now, we've asked for 300,000, and there's a possibility to ask for an additional 200, so we're going to try and, and jump on that.
For the design, and then 6 million is what the tip is?
Still 6 million, to my knowledge, still sitting at, at DOT for the, on the tip fund for the actual construction. But a whole lot of design work has got to get done first.
And what year is that slated for?
Uh, I think it's 2023. Well, I think it's 25, 24, 25?
Well, I think the 25 was, it was actually 22.
Yeah, I think it got moved to 25.
I think it's 25. I think it got changed.
Yeah, okay.
We have to check on that.
Pleasant Street was 25.
So, but the, even the design fund, we're still, you know, we're still not quite there, because we, I think we had figured, just as a ballpark, we were going to aim for 10% of the tip money to go toward design, and so we're still a tad bit short, but this would really get us quite a ways down the line, if we can do that, so. Making some headway. So we'll have to, you know, we'll put in the application, and hopefully, we can, we can get the funds for it.
I just ask you two other questions?
Yeah.
So right now, the grants that are still out there pending is the Water Department wrote a grant for the acquisition of land on Palmery. Then, wasn't there an MVP? Did you apply? Because our MVP plan is up or something, so you applied for-
That's the first one I mentioned. That's what Randall's working on with tie-in-bond.
Okay, good.
So that's, that's the MVP Action Grant, and that's going to be to do basically, I guess I would call it a culvert assessment. So it's kind of a culvert inventory and assessment, to look at where all of our culverts are in town, how many we have, what shape they're in, those kinds of issues, because some may be too small for the flow coming through them, others may just be totally deteriorated, worn out, need replacement. So that's basically the, the focus of an MVP.
The action grant?
Action grant, yeah, so this will be the proposal.
Wasn't there something else that was like MVP?
Hazard mitigation.
Hazard mitigation, right.
And that is an application that has been, it was a hazard mitigation grant to update our hazard mitigation plan, and that grant, yeah, application was, was put in, and we haven't gotten any word on that at all, actually, on that one.
So those are the things that are pending?
Those are the ones that are pending, as far as I know, yeah.
And one last question. Will we have information about the web design and the WebCity, the WindWest? Will we have that information before we have to look at all the ARPA applications, or will that be like another level, or?
Probably not, not the broadband stuff at this point in time. I'm hoping that we would have information about the, the website design, because we've met with two companies that we, you know, had good presentations with, and we're asking one to come back and go into a little bit more detail, because a couple of the members of the committee weren't there that night. So I'm hoping that we will have that information. We need that, I think, before we can really put down some figures toward, toward the ARPA application.
Okay, thank you.
You had any further comment? Is that your understanding? Yeah, okay. All right, any other questions for anybody? All right, good. So we've had some busy things happening here, but anyway, keeping on. So we have some appointments, I believe. Let's see here, what do we have? So it looks like we have two candidates for the AdHoc Senior Center Feasibility, Feasibility Committee, and as the other ones we had done, these would expire in May, May 17th, 2023.
Yeah, and just to let you know that there is one vacancy available on that committee.
There's only one-
Two, two, two people have applied for it. There is one open, open position.
One vacancy, okay, all right. Okay, well, okay, so we have, shall we, we may as well read out a little bit about the background of the people? Is that what we want to do? Okay. Anybody want to, or I will?
I'll just, I'll do the first one anyway. So this is, one candidate that has applied is Elizabeth, also goes by Libby Baldwin. And she wrote a letter, Dear Mr. Gibson, please see my attached volunteer application to serve on the AdHoc Senior Center Feasibility Committee, as well as a professional resume that outlines my engineering experience. As noted in the application, I'm a registered professional engineer in Massachusetts and Connecticut, and have worked at Tie &amp; Bond Engineering Consulting Firm for the past 34 years. I've also lived across the street from David Red Parsons for 24 years until he passed away last year. Although David was a very private person, our family interacted with him occasionally, and we became very fond of him. I'm particularly interested in serving on this committee, as our family had a personal connection to Red, and would like to see his wishes for the construction of a new senior center fulfilled. And it says, please email me or call me with any questions. And then she attached, she attached the application for the committee itself, and registered professional engineer in Massachusetts, worked at Tie &amp; Bond 34 years, lived, you know, she reiterated that, and then there's also a resume. She is currently Vice President.
At Tie &amp; Bond.
At Tie &amp; Bond, and her various experiences.
Okay, all right, all right, that's one. And we have a second one. Somebody like to read that one?
Okay, if you want, I'll read it.
Sure.
It's to the Southampton Senior Center Feasibility Committee. I believe I would be an asset to the committee by my qualifications listed below.
Who's it from, sorry?
It is from Carl Cushy.
Okay.
And his qualifications include, he graduated from Smith Vocational in Northampton as a carpenter. He's helped in building four houses. Besides carpentry, I have some experience in electrical and plumbing. I was a cabinet maker, carpenter for physics department at UMass in Amherst. I worked for the town of Montague as a maintenance slash carpenter. I held contract, I hold a contractor's license for the state of Massachusetts. I was a town meeting member in Montague, Massachusetts. I was in charge of kitchen at Elks in Turnus Falls, cooking for large groups, also at the Schutzen Varan Club in Irving, Massachusetts, and held SafeServe certification, so I have knowledge of what facilities need and codes for ADA. Thank you. And that is Carl Cushy.
And he has his application as well?
He has completed his application, yes.
Okay, so we have two candidates. Does anyone have any thoughts on this? We need a motion to figure out how we're going to move forward with only one choice here, I believe. We only have one seat to fill at this point in time.
Well, I think it's great that we have, you know, more applicants, and I'm certainly hopeful that whoever doesn't get voted on it would be, would consider other committees in town, but I'll make a motion to approve Elizabeth Libby Baldwin to be on the committee. We've had a couple of meetings, and I think that her background would really serve us really well. We definitely need project management people, and I think the personal connection to Red is in a, and length of time, I think that that's an additional plus. So I think that she maybe has a little bit more of what the committee is looking for right now, but grateful for both of their applications.
No, it's, it's not usual that we get more than one application for a position, so that's good. I'm glad to hear that. And I believe Mr. Cushy is fairly new to town as well, so that's another good sign.
Yeah.
To have somebody, a newcomer to town. So let's have a second, and then we can have some discussion, though.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion, please, on any thoughts, discussion?
What I like is that she brings another dimension, in that she has a background in water resources and wastewater projects. I think when we're identifying, you know, looking at the potential of several properties, I think that would be an asset to, to the committee.
Any other comments? John? Joy, anybody?
No, I agree with everything that's been said.
Yeah, okay. All right, so I think we have a motion on the table to appoint Elizabeth Baldwin to the vacant position. All those in favor? All those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes, one, two, four to one. Thank you. And thanks to both candidates. Uh, thanks to Carl. And we would like to see you back around for perhaps some other positions that you might be interested in. There's lots of things that we can get done in town. And, uh, good to have a newcomer in town to volunteer. So thank you. All right, moving forward on new business. So other budget requests for 2023. I think what we have in the packet, Ed, just to clarify, is basically the same numbers that we had before. There's nothing new in tonight's packet because you and Bradley are still working on the charge from last meeting of trying to combine things and figure out where we are in terms of how to do this in a consistent,
Yeah, actually.
standardized basis.
And Jen.
And Jen, sorry, yeah. Sorry, Bradley, Jen and Ed are working on that. And so, um, I think we were asking that we have something ready for the May 3rd. We were going to have a special,
That's our target.
target meeting to work on that and really try to nail all that down, okay? So is there other, are there other things that we want to discuss any further? I mean, I think the issue that has been brought forth here by, by Chief Workman would fall into that next meeting as well. I don't know if there's other things to say about it this evening from anybody. I think we need to understand better what, what the budget is looking like and, and what his request would mean, but this is definitely way beyond our,
And what, what the figures, numbers are actually in that.
Right, yeah, in terms of how many,
We see that, yeah.
what the extra, extra money is that's being asked for, what we need to transfer or consider transferring.
I don't think we ever really responded to his previous request to the email with the, uh, with the proposal around staffing. So I don't know if that's something we can talk about on the 3rd also or?
I think we should, yeah. Because he had put in a request, I think, for some permanent staffing and then trying to cover that one way or the other and then taking, um, I think he was recommending permanent staffing out of the operating budget and, and benefits out of ARPA or something like that, if I recall his note.
Yeah, right.
It was in our packages last time. But I think, I think all of that should come together as part of our budget discussion when we meet next time.
Well, if we're going to do that, because Jesse actually put something in writing and say where it's going to come from, whether it's ARPA or the general fund that you just suggested.
In the email, we, or we had an email from, it was in our packets last time, I think.
Well, the email was a bunch of bullet points. It wasn't really.
I thought it was, okay, maybe.
Maybe, maybe it was, maybe it wasn't.
Not sure.
But also, you know, what's the expense for, you know, adding FTEs with employee benefits? What's the impact for additional retirement contributions that are going to be impacted?
Right.
He does allude that it goes beyond his budget, but.
Yeah, we'll have to take a look. And I, I'm not exactly remembering what that looked like last time. I was thinking it was a bit more of a narrative, but I could be wrong. So we'll, we'll definitely get him to, to do that if that wasn't what was presented.
And they might say it might be a good idea to have him come to also.
Come to the meeting and then, you know, explain it too, so.
Right, and wherever possible, more details in advance.
Yeah.
Of what?
More details farther than the day of
Yeah.
the meeting would be good for those of us that are working full-time outside of
Yeah.
our Board of Select Persons' role and responsibility.
Right, okay. All right, so let's assume that we'll pick those back up when we meet on the 3rd, for sure, yeah.
The other question I had, and I don't, I'm not looking for an answer tonight, I just, you know, I thought about it after last meeting, is if the select board is in support of shifting any funds, I mean, like mosquito program, Sharps container, um, the stormwater over to ARPA, are we in support of funding those first before other considerations or is it still on the table as to whether or not we would vote to approve them? I just would like to know before I kind of decide whether to shift it over if,
Yeah.
because I'm worried about the fact that it's only a two-year
Right.
deal.
Valid point. And one of the things that I'm working on is, is trying to take a look at the, um, the Treasury Codes and unless anybody else has started doing that, the Treasury Codes that Hoyo could use to try and say, okay, with the applications that we have right now, which are the few that we had seen last time, how, where do they fit within the different Treasury Codes? So we know what we're looking at. But I haven't finished that yet, but I would try to get that done for the next meeting so we can take a look at the list of applications we currently have and where they all fit. Uh, but we would have to add these few things that we mentioned at the last meeting and see that too. We, we haven't discussed, we hadn't planned on, I guess, having extras from the budget come back into ARPA per se in that regard. So we haven't made any clear discussion on that, decision on that. Any thoughts or recommendations on that? Um, we may pick up some of the ARPA things. I think we said we would start, you know, trying to make some decisions on ARPA. Um, I'm thinking we still have one or two applications from past, uh, past approvals for ARPA that didn't come in. Um, what's coming to my mind is the Board of Health and the contact tracing. Did that come in now?
I, Jack came in today.
Okay, all right. So that was an application that should have come in, okay, all right. All right, so let's, we'll, we'll work on an agenda for, um, for the May 3rd meeting and that maybe will help us get a little bit of clarity there, okay? Anything else in terms of, um, other budgets for other departments or revenue estimates? I don't think anything has changed on revenue estimates at all, right? All right, so I think we are up to an annual town meeting date, um, if I recall.
Yes.
We had voted last time and now we have another glitch.
June 14th and, uh, checked and Nora School is not available on June 14th and told me that's their busiest week of the year, so, uh, it's, I suppose that two dates that would come immediately back to my mind would be either June 7th or back to that June 21st date. And both of those are available.
If I remember right, you, you originally were not in favor of the 21st and just refresh my memory as to why?
Oh, only because school lets out, I believe, on the 16th. So it's the question of, do people take off for vacation right away after school lets out and are not available for, um, you know, that town meeting?
Yeah, we're trying to attract as many people as possible when we have an indoor meeting. I mean, we did reduce our quorum, but nonetheless, I mean, it is the annual town meeting, so we'd like to get as many possible, people as possible, um.
And if I remember correctly, Ed was in favor of June 1st.
7th.
June 7th to begin with, yes.
Yeah.
Originally, I think we had talked about the 7th and then we pushed it a little bit, but.
Just as long as we're all comfortable meeting through Memorial Day weekend.
I will not be here.
Nor will I.
Well, why would we have to if it's already over a month away?
June 7th.
I mean, I know the urgency.
We failed our first deadline, so there's no reason to believe that we won't repeat our sentence. But it doesn't matter.
You got money, we already got the,
There'll still be three of you to act upon everything.
I think, I think we basically are very close in terms of where we were with budget. We've got to come down in terms of where we are with salaries. That's our, our really outstanding issue, I think. And if we can nail some of that down on May 3rd, I don't see why we can't. We've got to get several of these articles written up. I mean, I don't think any of us would like to be working through Memorial Day weekend. And I don't know that why, why we should have to be, but. Ed, you're, you're more in control of the, of the pen than we are in terms of drafting things. So it's really realistic in terms of all these articles that we're putting on this thing here.
I won't be here Memorial Day weekend either.
Well, there we go.
So it'll be done, it'll be done before that.
What's the deadline date then for the, um, all the articles if it's June, if it's, uh, June 7th?
Let me see what Fridays and Saturdays are, but it would be like May 30th or something. I don't know if that's a Saturday or a Sunday.
May 30th is Monday. It's a Monday. And that is actually technically Memorial Day, I believe.
So let's say May 27th would be the drop dead, latest drop dead date.
Yeah, and hopefully we can do better than that. We're going to meet again on the, sort of.
But I would, I would think everything would be ready for signing for the 24th.
24th. I would say our regular meetings are going to be on the 10th and the 24th. Uh, we're having a, a joint one with FinCom on the 3rd.
Wait a minute.
Is that right?
Yeah. I want to make sure.
So FinCom's meeting the 2nd and 3rd?
Was that?
No. Uh, well, 2nd is the FinCom themselves, I think, right? Is that right?
But it's a joint meeting on the 3rd?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
And then.
Okay, and then the election is the 17th and we, we should, we should plan on approving everything on the 24th.
Right. I think we have to make it happen. I mean, the, the longer we put it off, you know, everything has a way to sort of, you know, fulfill its, uh, slowness to a deadline. I'd rather have a deadline, we stick to it. With this one, we thought we had it. We didn't realize that the school would not be available. So I guess we should have made that a, if the school were available, when we decided on the 14th, but we didn't do that. So at this point in time, uh, we have to.
I think we have to stop with the last-minute request either.
Yeah.
We got two of them tonight.
We do.
Like, that's not gonna.
We have to stop that. So I think, um, I would entertain a motion to have the town meeting be on June 7th rather than on June 14th, as previously voted on last meeting. So I will make that motion.
I'll second it.
If I can do that. Okay, any further discussion on that? I think we just need to commit ourselves to getting it done. Uh, and it, you know, none of us want to be working through a holiday.
Could you recognize the moderator before we vote?
I can do that.
I'm sorry, go ahead and vote.
No, 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 no. I was just, I was just looking down the road. I didn't see you. Do you want to say something before we vote? No, go ahead.
I'm going to say something after your vote.
Oh, okay, all right.
Sorry.
All right, so we have a motion. We have a motion and a second. All right, so all those in favor of, uh, scheduling the town, annual town meeting for June 7th at Nora School? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. I believe we pass for June 7th and we're going to hold to it. Yes, Mr. Moderator?
Okay, Robert Floyd, College Highway, is town moderator. Uh, since we are meeting for an annual town meeting on the Tuesday, June 7th, a copy of all potential annual town meeting handouts must be in town clerk's office by noon, Monday, June 6th, for consideration.
Monday, June 6th? Just the day before?
It's the day before.
Is it? Okay.
Yeah, I, I run it tight.
By any particular time, Robert?
Noon.
Noon.
Noon, thank you.
You're welcome.
Noon on June 6th.
I think that's what you usually did, but I just wanted to make sure.
Cheers, teamwork.
Yeah, good.
And the town moderator, annual town meeting article information session will be on Thursday, May 26th at 7 o'clock. And I'm not going to need the room. Oh, Lucy's not here. Uh, I'm not going to need the room. I'm going to do it via Zoom.
Okay.
And it'll be out live on channel 191.
Great.
Okay, cheers, thank you.
Thanks very much. Appreciate it, Robert. Okay. All right, thank you, everybody. Uh, is there any other business under this category that can't wait until the next regular meeting of May 10th?
No, not necessarily, but just to clarify the chair's previous comments. So finance is meeting on Monday,
Correct.
May 2nd. And then you believe we're having a joint session on May 3rd?
I think so because that was, be when we have to really dig into the whole salary. That's when Ed and Bradley in general have finished.
And on May 3rd, assuming the material is available for us, we, we will consider both the Board of Health request and the Fire Chiefs request that came in tonight.
I think so, yeah.
But at this point, that's it. Everything else has been closed.
Everything else, I think it should be, is closed, yeah. We'll, we'll at least hear them out and hear what's going on. I mean, whether we can accommodate, that's another story.
Okay, I'm just getting this straight in my head.
My preference would be that the Board of Health would actually discuss it. So if they want to do a joint meeting at that time, that's fine, but I just think that that should be a vote by their committee and I don't believe there's been a meeting of the Board of Health.
See if there was, I,
They, I didn't see anything scheduled.
Scheduled. I was going to ask about that, but I, I know they, yeah, I don't think so. But so if, if they aren't having a meeting before that, then they could come as well for a portion of that meeting to address the septic betterment program, Ed, okay?
So yet, just from, from the chair's point of view, you're looking for us to block May 3rd, May 10th and May 24th?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right.
And we don't need any additional Thursdays, then? That should do it.
Don't think we do.
Right.
At this point in time. I mean, I think we're, we'll have a couple of things. Um, I think part of the 3rd, we may have a small executive session to finish off a couple, a couple of things that are in play. But, um, hopefully we can make it work without having a Thursday meeting.
And have all seven bylaws been reviewed by our attorney?
Yes, they have.
Reviewed. We've made all the comments. They've reviewed our, our changes and.
And are there any planning board bylaws that are going to be requested for review?
No, they held off because they wanted to see what, uh, E-code 360 was going, going to do.
Okay, great, thanks.
So, okay, so with that, uh, old business, um, we, if you notice, we, we did reverse the articles here, order a little bit. Uh, Joy had asked me about that at one point in time, so I thought I'd accommodate tonight to put new business before old business.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Sorry. Um, old business. Um, is there anything happening here? So COVID update, I know, uh,
I, I was told by the health director today that currently we have 18 positives in Southampton.
18, mm-hmm, okay. What I was reading about in other places and hearing about too is that it just seems like there's a continued under-reporting of, of cases because there is so many, there are so many people maybe doing home testing and rather than the PCR testing and a lot of the PCR tests, testing sites have shut down too.
It's getting more confusing because you've got people that are doing home testing and not reporting if they're positive. And then you've got people that are actually doing home tests and self-reporting, so.
Yeah, yeah. So everybody, take, take care. We're not out of the woods here yet, so.
Do we have any information then on contact tracing as a result of kind of this variation of testing and reporting?
Still should be doing it, from what I understand. We had, we had applied,
They're still doing it, yeah.
The contract was still going through, through June.
No, I just meant that we have any information about the results. I, I haven't heard any.
When the Board of Health meets, we can, we can ask them for that, but I don't.
But I also think we're one of the few communities that's still engaging in that practice.
Could be, yeah, I don't know. In terms of doing the contact tracing?
Well, we're funded.
There's guidance out there for the private sector employers that, and as, to paraphrase, that we're, we are to treat this no more than we treat the flu. It's just you use your sick time, you stay home and use your own judgment. No longer are we, um, having employees stay out or reporting or requiring them to disclose.
Well, right now, the case tracing is funded through the end of June and I think that right now with all the home tests, it's going to be impossible to do case tracing in, in the way that it's been done in the past.
Right, yeah.
At the 18 cases, is there any impact on the schools? Do we know?
Do we know if they're school-related, the 18 ones at all?
I don't know.
No?
Okay.
All right, um, I think CARES Act, we should be able to take this off the agenda, no?
Yeah, I just missed that one.
All right. East Street Bridge.
Still moving forward and still heading towards, uh, completion in September, October.
Okay. All right. And Rapid Kiss Up Kit Up, Rapid, yeah, Rapid Test Kits update.
Yeah, thank goodness. Reenie and her interns did a fantastic job with, uh, the, uh, what was left of those kits, getting them out into the public. So thank you very much.
The, the interns' last day is tomorrow. Um, yep, and, um, I just want to thank everybody. I mean, they've had a really positive experience and all the department heads have been incredibly hospitable and helpful. Um, and they did reach their goal of increasing code red signups by over 10%. We're going to wait to see what April comes in as, but that was a big push. Um, there's lots.
Be here tomorrow?
They will be here tomorrow. It's the last day. Um, the, the Rapid Test Kits, there are plenty left in the Board of Health office. I think Jerry was going to bring some to the transfer station and also to the vaccine clinic tomorrow night. But please, uh, they have a short shelf life, so anybody that needs any more, please come to the Board of Health and get some. There's lots available and we don't want them to go, you know, expire.
All right, great, thank you. All right, and last, on the old business, the voiceover IP update, anything happening?
Phones have been ordered. We sent the, uh, I had for, uh, information along to the vendor and we're just waiting to hear back if they need anything else from us.
Okay. This is a process, to say the least, but we'll get there. Good, all right. Um, okay, articles for town meeting. I'm going to assume we've got, should we kind of number these and figure out how many we have here?
That's a good idea.
Or is that too scary? Do we, do we treat the free cash policy as one or as three?
That's three.
Okay.
Basically, let's see, 7, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, 36, 37, and then depending on, it looks like depending on that additional Board of Health one. So it looks like somewhere 37, 38 in that neighborhood.
Yeah, is there any way to group the? Is there any way to group these together to convince the moderator to take them up as packages? Because 37 at two minutes apiece, that's an hour and 14 minutes right there.
That's up to a moderator and I already, I already actually assumed some of these would be packaged.
Any insight he wants to give us now on how we should clump them to support us on the floor would be greatly appreciated.
Robert Floyd, town moderator. I give you an option, two nights. There is, we've done it effectively before. There's also another concept, we talked about before the special. It doesn't work for the special, it does work for the annual when there are articles that we see year after year after year with very little discourse, very little debate. You can put them together and throw it out to the town. Generally, we want to get that out. That might be something I work on for our next meeting. We can suggest it and certainly mention in the town water article, you know, ATM information sessions, so...
Like the three votes for moving the free cash that we do every year per the bylaw? That could all be...
Well, the revolving funds and WPAT funds and the like. But we've had experience where the littlest article went 25 minutes. So it, it, it could, it can backfire, but I think streamlining it...
Yeah, I mean, I, I get if a citizen steps up and has the support to break something out, then let's have the full five-hour discussion.
And somebody could just say...
If they don't...
Yeah, somebody could just say whatever they say and that's taken right out of that, that group. So, yeah, we'll look at it.
And we actually have two, I think, out of the seven, Francine, right? Two out of the seven bylaws are, are proposed deletions completely. There were like two-sentence bylaws.
And a couple of them only are single-word changes in existing bylaws.
Okay, okay, a night and a half.
Yeah.
Well, anyway, a couple that are being deleted. They're the same topic in terms of landfill, so they might be able to be combined, but...
All part of the adventure. Okay, cheers.
Yeah, see if we can narrow something down here, but, good. Okay, all right, so no further discussion on Articles this evening, is there?
Well, only, it says, "Transfer of ambulance receipts at $200,000." That, that should be updated to $100,000, right?
Uh, correct.
Correct.
Yes, and actually, I think we actually roll that into, it might be actually rolled into the operating budget article. I'll go back and take a look at how we've done that.
Okay, and then the shortfall for, never mind.
Yeah, that's...
I just answered my own question.
Yeah, that's the one we'll pick up again next week, yeah, right.
And I, I do notice that there's 11 unpaid bills for the last fiscal year. So simultaneously, have we put out a call for all bills for this year to be paid? You know, there's five weeks left.
Yeah.
Now, I also got a ruling from DLS on some, some of those that revolving fund invoices had to be paid within that fiscal year process and couldn't be rolled over, so I'm, I will actually have Bradley send out a reminder to that to those that have revolving funds because they seem, some people seem to be a little lazier on the revolving fund and the things.
And then, so of, of our meetings, May 3rd, 10th, and 24th, when are we really going to dig? When does the chair believe we're really going to dig in to these and say, yes, they're all going forward?
On the Articles?
Or do we already assume they're all going forward?
Well, I guess my assumption has been, we know what's coming out of CPC, we know what's coming out of capital.
I just mean, when are we going?
Yeah.
Are we going to have a discussion or not?
I, I think there, there may be some, and we, we usually go through the actual wording, so I think it's a matter of how much the wording can be done. I guess I'm assuming on the May 10th one rather than on the May 3rd, Ed? In terms of actually seeing draft articles themselves?
Well, we can also go through them again in this form and see if there's anything here that isn't definitely thought of going forward. It'll save me the issue of writing that draft for May 10th.
And I guess my, I just want to, I want to hear discussion and rationality behind increasing the spending cap on revolving accounts. Those two particular... I don't feel I have enough information to understand why we're going from 5 to 20.
Gotcha, okay.
I'm not saying I'm opposed to it, I just don't have enough information.
Okay, yeah.
I think we also said you, I also think you're going to give us the spending caps on all the revolving accounts so we could have some comparison.
They're basically the same as last year, so yes, I can actually just take...
They're probably in the town report anyway, right?
Last year's ATM and, and give it to you so you can see them.
So I think with a couple of exemptions there, exceptions, most of these I would expect to be moving forward, I think, but I, I think we need to...
From my point of view, or at least from my opinion, those, those two increases are the only ones that I really, in my mind, have a question.
Okay.
I don't know if people have questions on other ones, but I'd like more details on those.
Sure, yeah.
And honestly, but, you know, for the, we're having a joint meeting with the Finance Committee on May 3rd, I would be interested in their recommendations of these articles as well.
Right, yeah.
So it, for that meeting, for discussion purposes with us, so that we had an understanding.
Right.
I think we already approved the capital request. CPC is, CPC is pretty well...
Capital, but I mean, all of these...
I think we can remove the treasure collected, appointed.
Yes. I didn't count that one.
Okay, okay. So I think, you know, the idea, I mean, we have the, the bylaw ones pretty much drafted, so those, if you wanted to look at those next week, we could look at those on the 3rd.
Yeah.
And then, you know, some of the, if there's some simple ones that don't require lots and lots of language, we might be able to look at those, but most of them I would think we would look at for the 10th. So we've got, we've seen them once, then the second time we back around, we're really, you know, just checking on the language so that they're ready to be posted out there.
And could, could you just clarify what miscellaneous articles is? Is that just a catch-all for something that might come up?
That's a catch-all, exactly, to case there's something that, you know, comes up every year or something that I missed or whatever.
Well, or like the septic betterment one that came up, right?
Well, I didn't really have that in mind.
You didn't have that in mind?
When I did that, but...
That falls in under there, in terms of miscellaneous, right? Sort of, yeah.
It was, it was more for myself if there was something that was required, like, okay, there does need to be a separate article that says, "Transfer X amount of dollars from ambulance receipt funds," and I hadn't listed it.
Yeah, gotcha, okay. All right, so we will see if we can have maybe a few that are at least in, in solid draft form. Thinking of just the bylaws ones, if we wanted to, just to read through them. But otherwise, we'll focus on bylaws for the 10th, I mean, sorry, we'll focus on warrant articles for the 10th, okay? All right, anything else? If not, we'll move on to signatures. We have a PCF here somewhere. John, would you like to pick that one up?
Yeah, this is a change in salary as it relates to the Water Department Superintendent based on a contract that was executed and endorsed by both the Water Commission and the Board of Selectmen with an effective date of 7/1/2021, going from $76,021.40 to $95,600. Again, it's retro to July 1st of 2021.
Mhm, okay. All right, and this has already been approved through a contract, but we need to sign the PCF tonight, so we need to vote on the PCF.
Correct, so I would make a motion to endorse the PCF.
Okay, can I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, could I call for vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, that passes. That's the only signature thing tonight? Okay, very good. Okay, next, we have licenses and permits. Okay, and...
We have...
Ed, do you want to pick that up, please?
Yeah, we have one request for a one-day wine and malt license for the Conan Park Pavilion for Saturday, May 21st, 2022, from 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM for a celebration of life, and the applicant is Penny Redfern. Everything is in place. They have a park permit. I did speak with the police chief today and he sees no related issues.
Okay. All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the park permit submitted by Redfern.
Penny Redfern.
For a date, I don't have handy, or is it?
For May 21st, yeah.
May 21st.
Okay. We have a motion, can we have a second, please?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Is there a general question? Does it, is it the select board or the park commission that sets the fees for renting the Conan?
Park commission.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes, thank you. And that we will sign as well. All right, so that's it for licenses and permits. Next warrants, Francine.
Okay, payroll warrant 22-40 for $284,127.43. Payroll deduction warrant 22-40 for $47,939.34. Payroll deduction warrant with retirement, PD 22-40A Vendor warrant 22-41 for $303,437.66. Payroll warrant 22-42 for $289,756.8. And payroll deduction warrant 22-40 for $46,397.46.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about expenses they've seen here? Offhand? Shouldn't there be another vendor payment warrant in here? No? This goes from the end of, or beginning of April.
Yeah, I, I only have up through April 14th. Like, these were dated.
Okay, I thought we usually had two of, two of each in here oftentimes, but maybe not. Maybe we hit a wrong, wrong timing. Okay, any questions by anybody on these, offhand?
Nope.
Something, I can't find where it was. Okay. Oh, I know, I did have one question. So the, on the vendor, vendor warrant, the Westfield Animal Shelter, we just did a, a payment to them, so this must be coming, this is like our last payment, maybe on our contract with them?
We would make payments through the end of June.
Okay.
Yes, would, these would be for services rendered.
Oh, okay. I was, it was a thousand dollars and, $1,088, so I was thinking it was like a quarterly payment, yeah?
I'll take...
It seemed like a lot for...
I'll have to pull it and take a look at it then.
Not sure what it was for, so I was just curious about that. It just seemed, don't usually see that on the, on the warrant, so I figured it might be a quarterly, uh...
Yeah, I'll, I'll double-check it, let you know one way or the other.
Yep, okay. Okay, if no questions on that, we have some minutes to approve, and these were for, I'm, this is for November 16th, and I think this was basically when we were last reading the articles for the special town meeting in December. So this was a readout of the articles at the time?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Make a motion to approve the minutes from November 16th, 2021.
All right, can I have a second on that?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Say aye.
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 All right, approved, and then who...
I noticed Judy did those, is Kathy still doing the minutes? Are they some doing?
Kathy's still doing the minutes, so taking some that were like odd meetings and whatever and had Judy doing it.
Okay, thank you.
We've asked to have her give us an, an update of where, where she's at with things in terms of, you know, I don't want us to get too, too far behind here. We're trying to stay on track as much as we can, so... With a little luck, we will, but it feels like, this one just, yeah, came out of the blue. I'd forgotten about this one altogether, but I think we're...
I had to.
We're, we're more up into February, I'm thinking, for actual minutes.
For actual minutes, correct.
We're probably due for March. I think we're behind for March.
Chris, were we supposed to address the quorum issue?
I think we voted on it. We've posted it, I believe, on the website. It's on our more, on our...
We have not, we did not vote. We did not open a pub, the public hearing, close the public hearing or, or motion second or vote on it.
We had to give seven days' notice that we were considering it, which is what we did. So tonight, we would actually act upon it.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I apologize, okay. So, tell me what we need to do then? We didn't do that, so we have a notice. Well, yeah, I mentioned the public hearing at the beginning and nobody said anything.
And then went on from there.
Okay, I had my own public hearing. All right, sorry about that, guys. All right, so we have to open...
Open, open a public hearing and then any comments from the public or from the select board members?
Got it. All right, we're opening the public hearing at 7:45 to talk about the annual town meeting quorum that we had wanted to consider reducing from 50 to 25 votes. And this will now be for the June 7th meeting. So the hearing is, the meeting is open for discussion on this? Any, any further discussion on this?
Can I ask a question? This is more of a point of order. Isn't a public hearing identified at a particular time? So shouldn't we just acknowledge that we're going to discuss it at next Tuesday's meeting and then do the public hearing at a particular time? I mean, not that there's going to be a ton of people in the public that are going to speak to it.
I mean, I guess I had thought it had been since our last meeting. It, it's been on our, on our agendas, but I guess that doesn't, because the agendas are posted.
Doesn't have to be posted certain.
I guess that may not count as a real posting.
It's a public hearing.
Robert Floyd, yes, to the exact time. We had a lawyer once, or actually a former mayor of Holyoke, chastise the select board in the Old Town Hall that the clock on the wall was six minutes fast.
Okay.
And therefore, not, not an exact for town meeting. Plus, we changed the date, so technically, we were asking for a reduction in the quorum for, for May 3rd, and now it's going to be June 7th. So to be clean on this, there's plenty of time to do it properly.
Yeah, probably, I'll repost it on the website for May 10th.
To have it up there, or to have it on May 10th?
And then you can vote on it, um...
I'll post it for 11:55 PM.
Oh, no.
Just accommodate, John.
Then you can vote on it at your last meeting in May and it would be, it has nothing to do with the warrant and doesn't have to be posted, and it's plenty of time before June 7th, so that's, that would work.
Okay, so it would be posted on the 10th or until the 10th?
Whatever you want to do. If you want to go later than that and do it for the 24th, we can do that too.
Well, you do it on the 10th and then you, you, you vote on. Once you have your public hearing, I think there's so many days. I forget, seven days' notice or...
So we'd have the public hearing on the 10th?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so now I'm closing what I thought I just opened? Is that correct? Sorry about that, guys. All right, I gotta, I gotta go back and read my Robert's Rules here. I'm sorry about that.
Speaking of Robert's Rules, point of privilege?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, because I missed it under the, the section. Could I ask through the chair to the town administrator that the board be made available any updated mutual aid agreement entered into on behalf of the town by the fire chief to any surrounding communities prior to our next meeting? I believe he alluded to that in his email, that there is such a document out there that exists. I'd just like to see it ahead of time.
Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah, that's a good point.
I will make available any document which I have in my possession.
And should you not have it in your possession, could you, could you seek.
Could you possibly retrieve that?
To obtain it, whether through our department head or through the Town of East Hampton under Freedom of Information Act. Yes, sir.
There we go, okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you, all right. Okay, so now we will move on, so that wasn't really a, a public hearing, that was just some discussion, and we'll.
That will happen on May 10th.
Still your first year's chair, you're good. Next year, you're gonna knock this out.
Oh, yeah. Anyway, so yes, we'll do the public hearing on May 10th, all right. Now, okay, we're down to pending items.
Jurn.
Yeah, Old Town Hall, I'll just let people know one thing, the, the Old Town Hall Working Group has not met in quite a while, but Christina Madsen has been working with her sister, who is a historical building preservation expert, and have been looking at things. We had tried to get an update from, was it Hill and Associates, is that the right company name? For a.
I think it's Hill Engineering.
Hill Engineering, for a revised sort of statement of work, for some basic work that we could do more at the roof level, none of the masonry repointing, none of the drainage, but some of the simple carpentry and, you know, window glass replacement and things like that, just to keep the building functional, in shape, without leaking and causing problems. And Hill and Associates have been, Hill Engineering, sorry, have been so busy that they haven't been able to give us any time to do that, so what we're hoping to do is come up with, I've seen just a draft of a possible, something that could count toward a statement of work, it's not finalized yet, but I'll take a look at that, too, with, with Ed, and also bring it back to you guys, but the idea would be to take something to, to have as a, as an ARPA application on this, wouldn't be coming out of, out of town budget, but just do an ARPA application on it, probably somewhere in the range of 40 or 50,000 dollars, I would guess, to do the basic maintenance upkeep on the roofing wood, wood areas, not to do any roofing itself, so that will be forthcoming as an ARPA application, and I'll work on helping put that together as well. So that's all I know about the Old Town Hall at the moment. Anything else? Audit process for 2021.
Would it be appropriate for us to look for recommendations on transfers at our May 3rd meeting, since we'll be in May, to fund, if we are going to move forward with the.
With the audit?
With the exorbitant price that we have before us? And then also, if we do opt to go that way, then do we want a place?
Yeah.
I guess I would ask Francine if one of the seven articles for the bylaws is the change, the, the one-year.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the changes that's proposed.
Yeah.
Under general government.
Yep.
Yes.
Yep, so yeah, to see whether we wanted to then, you know, we may have to do the one-year and then do whatever we're gonna do in terms of opening up for competition.
Yeah, by the time it goes through the Attorney General's Office and so forth.
Right.
It will take several.
But I think one of the options before us was if we could find money within the budget.
Right.
You know, whether or not we're gonna pay the price that's there is a different question, but.
Right, but if there was any, right, I know at one point, yeah, I think Ed, you'd said that you thought you might be able to find a few, a few nickels you could scrub together to help us move toward that audit cost for 2021, but.
And just as a new.
You can do that, or you can do it under loss of revenue of ARPA funds, too.
Yeah.
Well, just, just for my own clarification, I believe in May and June, we can do transfers, but it also requires consent from finance.
Finance and Select Board.
Right, and, and we're tentatively having a joint session on May 3rd.
Together on the 3rd?
That would make sense.
It might be appropriate to have whatever discussion we're gonna have, whether or not we can reach, 'cause, do both bodies have to agree to it?
Yes.
Isn't it, is it the final two weeks before and after the fiscal year? What is the window?
No, that is.
Required bills.
Yeah, that's something different.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
You're not talking about year-end transfers?
It could appropriate to, it could go to transfers, if you had a, you know, transfer number three, number four, that came up, that, of the sheet that came up like June 31st or whatever, you have to, I think it's July 14th to get both bodies to approve that.
But, but transfers can only happen as of May 1st, the last 60 days of the fiscal year.
Correct.
Sixty days, and then 14th into the new one, right, okay.
Transfers via that mechanism.
I thought it was 30.
You could bring up a transfer in October, November, December, January, February, March at a special town meeting and do it that way also.
Right, right, right.
I meant only through Select Board.
Right, yeah, so, the, if I'm hearing this correctly, the idea would be to also, as we're looking for how we would meet some ideas on the wages, we would be looking to see if there are funds that could be available to transfer to cover more of the cost of the audit than what we currently have budgeted, is that right?
Well, correct, 'cause I, I, I mean, from where I sit, I'm not even clear that there's three members of the Select Board that are going to support that cost, but if we're gonna have a vote on it, we need to know.
Yeah.
The first question is, does the money even exist?
Correct.
Right?
Yep.
Within the line items, and then we could have our discussion and.
Sure, yeah, yeah, well, and, and what we have for alternatives, I think, I think that's our, that's our biggest question, is like, I don't think anybody's terribly excited about the cost that's being proposed, but, you know, what do we have for alternatives? So, all right, so as, as you're looking at figures, Bradley and Jen, maybe you'll find a few, few hidden gems in the budget there somewhere that we might put toward this when we meet on the 3rd, okay? Since we'll have a joint meeting with FinCom, that would be appropriate to do that. Clearwater Woodland Bounder, anything from these guys and our reaction to our letter?
No, I still have to find a telephone number for a direct contact rather than a letter.
All right, well, I'm sure somebody ought to be able to get.
Cindy Palmer actually spoke to them directly.
Yeah.
She would have a contact information.
Okay, well, she's back, she's been away, but she's back in town now.
Yep.
So we can trail, and then track her down.
Ed, if you have an issue, both, three of their four officers are all insurers.
Are what?
Insurers, so I can give you their home addresses and phone numbers.
Okay. I, I will contact you for the two that I have the addresses with, that I've been corresponding with, and see if you've got phone numbers, if you do want them. That's perfect, thank you.
Okay, all right, anything more, we, I think we talked on the charter building on former road, we had talked about maybe writing them a letter saying, "Come take your stuff, go away."
Yeah.
"We don't want it anymore."
Yeah, before, we were actually negotiating to keep the building, like I said, it's been such a, kind of alluded process, so I'll just send them a letter that says, "Take your equipment and your building."
Yeah, okay. Everybody in agreement with that? It's been around forever on the agenda here, too.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, nothing more yet on the Green Community Grant, other ideas of things? We haven't gotten too far yet with the Cost efficiencies committees, we were hoping we could figure out some things that could work into that, but we haven't gotten to those big items yet, that could take advantage of the, the energy savings here. East Street tip proposal, the first section from Route 10 to Whispering Meadow, is that moving along with getting on the tip, or is that, that's still in VHB's hands, is that right?
Correct, yeah, VHB is working with us and DOT on that.
Okay, is there a deadline by when it has to be put on a tip? Do we miss a deadline on anything?
Oh, we're trying to get everything together to do a proposal to them for their May meeting.
Mm-hmm, okay, all right, and just one thing while we're sort of on transportation, I sent in a, a bit of a webinar today from the Federal Highway Administration slash with MassDOT, talking about some new grant possibilities, so I listened in on it for a little bit to talk about, hear about new grant possibilities, so there's a few things coming out that may be of interest, and they're, they're gonna send around the, the recording of the whole meeting, so once I get that, I'll pass it on to you and Randall in particular.
I got some information sent to me today, that I'll pass along to the Select Board.
Yeah, so there might be a couple of things that could be useful, they're trying to simplify things, but as usual with grants, nothing gets too simple. And then future ARPA funds allocation, I think we had kind of left that out, that we were gonna go for the lost revenue option after our meeting in East Hampton with the MMA folks, is that?
I thought we were gonna review the applications first and then decide how to allocate.
Well, I think we, we learned from that meeting that we didn't have to devote certain percentages to anything that we could classify, unless I'm wrong.
But I thought if it all went to lost revenue, then no nonprofit outside of the municipal government could be eligible, therefore, that would strike the church.
We found that, as, as long as we categorize it in our original announcement.
Must have missed that meeting.
We would be covered.
Yeah, that's, yeah, they said that.
Yeah, we can, we, I mean, it might behoove us just to double-check that before we do that, but that's what we, I think, understood from that meeting, many towns in Hoyoke, for example, has gone into three or four different categories besides lost revenue, and what was the other one we had, South Hadley, I think, did two, they had two, I think, two categories perhaps, but, no, it was a surprise at the, at the MMA meeting in East Hampton, that kind of came forth, which was a surprise, but.
So you're saying we can say it's all lost revenue, and then afterwards allocate it to.
It would not exclude nonprofits, yeah.
Okay.
Right, we, we just have to list the categories at which nonprofits would fall into, into our original announcement of lost revenue.
Mm-hmm, so, so we'll, we'll double-check that again before we get into this, but we need to start looking at some of these applications in more seriousness, and we'll see if we're ready to, depending on where we are with the budget and the articles, I mean, articles may take up a full meeting on the 10th already, that's gonna be a busy meeting looking at articles perhaps, so, I don't know, we may not be able to get to ARPA stuff until like the 24th, which is later than I would have wanted to, but that may be, we might get to it, I don't know, depending on.
What was the deadline we originally gave?
Uh, we wanted all applica, well, we wanted the first, quote-unquote, first round of applications in by May 1st.
Okay.
Which is approaching, so we'll have a few more in by then, and we've seen a few that have come in, but there may be.
Well, sure.
And then depending on those applications and our action, you know, we would, we said we would decide whether there would be a second round, and most likely, I would imagine there would be, so we didn't really set ourselves a date certain by when we had to decide, but we said we would start reviewing them and hopefully get to many of them in May. So I think that's still our goal, so perhaps that last meeting in May is gonna be more focused on that, once we've gotten the budget and articles out of the way for town meeting, okay? Yep, go ahead.
Like, in the month of May, you're not anticipating any quarterly reports or any?
We had not put any in, we had left them, and I, I've actually let us, you know, go back into a couple of meetings here in April, because we had just heard they were basically fire, police, somebody, well, Board of Health had been a, a reprogramming one, they had missed it a couple of meetings ago, and we had told them we might have them back tonight, and then just figured we had enough going on that we wouldn't do that, so people have gotten a reprieve, but partly because we've seen fire and police a couple of times already with budget and so forth, so.
The only two that, as far as I remember, and I don't think I missed any meetings.
Yep.
Is we haven't had a representative from Charter slash Spectrum come before us.
Charter.
And, and we haven't had a joint session with our state senator or our state rep.
Right, yeah.
And I don't want to try and cram them before the elections, but I wonder if our state parties with the senator and the rep, if we could try and look out to July or August and coordinate and try and.
Yeah.
Fit one of those on our calendar.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, no, probably, I don't know, maybe more like July, I would think, but, yeah, that would be an idea. The, what was I just thinking about? We have for June, what we had, we'd sort of left May open in terms of quarterly reports, but we had put, I believe, Charter, HG&E, and Verizon, I'm thinking, as our June quarterly report time people, so we'll take a look at that again and see if that may, if people would still like to do that, we can certainly invite them in at that point, okay? So, just calendar, so joint meeting May 3rd with FinCom, and Ed, sorry, that's 6:00 or 6:30, 6:30 probably?
If it's a joint meeting, it would be 6:30.
6:30 on the 3rd, but then regular Select Board meetings, May 10th, May 24th, as usual, at 6 o'clock, town election, May 17, okay?